So we're in the corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Get a roll call attendance please.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Okay, all the board members have received the minutes from the July fifteenth and August twelfth meeting. Suppose if there's no questions regarding the minutes, we get a motion to accept the minutes as written by the secretary.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, our first item on the agenda this evening is vote on site plan, special use permit and lot line consolidation for Route 376 Holdings. Do we have anybody here? Okay.
Good evening, Christopher Lapina with De Chazan Companies representing Route 376 Holdings. We've reviewed the resolution of preliminary and final subdivision approval and site development and special permit approval. We find the conditions acceptable.
Okay, all right, so as long as you found all the conditions acceptable, and that also includes what we brought up at the last meeting regarding the New Hackensack Heights Road, knowing.
Yeah, and I think as we discussed the last meeting, we were going to discuss that with the Highway Super Department. I believe the owner is going to.
Okay.
So I think what he's willing to do at this point is he'd be willing to mill it. Would the town, he asked, be willing to contribute the asphalt for their road? It's, I think it was acknowledged at the last meeting that the road's in terrible shape right now. And that since he's going to be working in there, they've asked if he can contribute to doing that. But is that something that the town may be willing to do is at least contribute the asphalt if he's going to mill it and then place it?
All right, that's, you haven't have, you don't have any agreement with this?
We don't have an agreement, but that's what he, he's willing to do. He said if it's already deteriorated, is that something that the town may be willing to contribute to?
Got to take that up with the Highway Super.
Yeah, but I mean, we could vote on the resolution as it's written, which includes the milling and paving. And then you'd have to work something out with the Highway Superintendent, but if he doesn't agree to it, you'd be on the hook for doing both.
I, I, I can't commit to him incurring the cost of the asphalt.
I mean, just like you're asking, Chris, I mean, why is, why is, why is this such a big like deal? I mean, it seems like it's a really short stretch compared to.
It's actually a bigger stretch.
You know, they repave in pretty much most of.
It's a two hundred foot stretch, and I think it was acknowledged at the last meeting, the condition of the roadway.
Well, plus, plus, plus that's going to be used as the primary construction access, so.
We changed that at the last meeting to come in off of Route 376.
That's not what's, that's not what's shown on the plans, but you know, the current plans, I know.
No, we agreed to that at the last meeting that we would come in off of Route 376. It's just, it's a, it's a, I think we measured it was about two hundred feet. And it's a significant cost to redo two hundred feet of roadway along our frontage of that property. It's not a fifty foot endeavor.
Right, but did you, but nothing was submitted for that change though?
Correct.
Right.
Well, we haven't, we haven't submitted that on our plans, so. So I mean, I'm assuming, you know, if it's, if it's in the condition that it's in, does the town not have any proposal in the future to, to repair it? Like I said, he's willing to know.
That's, you know, the Highway Superintendent's call, that's, that's not our call.
So then we got to wait to hear from the Highway Superintendent then?
Yeah, he would have to, he'd have to give us some recommendation, one way or the other. You know, as I said, obviously, we, we, it was put into the.
Correct.
You know, into the resolution to go ahead and do that, to mill them.
Yeah, that was the one I, I'm glad you reminded me because that was the only thing I had, I had spoke to the client about is it's a, it's a significant length. I mean, unless you're willing to, you know, maybe within the area of where the entryway is. But I can't do the entire length along that number of disturbance line.
I guess.
Well, it's about, I mean, it's about a hundred and, it's about a hundred and sixty feet. Yeah, up to, up to here, yeah, up to the entrance.
Yeah, maybe we should reschedule. Yes, I mean, we'd have to wait, we'd have to wait until that gets resolved. Yeah, unless, you know, unless it has its written now, but we need to get some resolution.
So we would speak to the Highway Super to discuss that then, or would we go to the town board to discuss?
Well, I believe it falls into the Highway Superintendent's. Yeah, he's, he's responsible for all the roads.
Well, you know, I mean, one of the things is that, you know, to the extent that the applicant is doing it rather than the town, you know, the benefit of, we don't, the applicant doesn't have to pay prevailing wage.
Correct, correct.
So if we're just talking about the materials cost.
Correct, he said he would be willing to provide the labor of the town that would provide the asphalt is what he.
I don't know how, how we could do that, I mean, for like a develop, for a development project for the town to supply the asphalt and somebody else paves it.
I mean, it's, it's not, like I said, it's not a, it's not a prime tenfold.
We would have to get a comment from Mr. Bettina as to her, as his acceptance of that proposal.
Look, can that, is that legal though, if, from what?
I'm going to reserve.
Okay.
A formal opinion at this point in time.
All right, so.
So I mean, by, by us voting on it as it is currently, right, it puts, it puts you.
In a position to.
Correct, it puts you in that position and, you know, if we put, if we put this off to the next meeting, that would give the, the owner of the property time to talk to Mr. Bettina. And he can go ahead and they can, you know, if they can work something out.
Just one other question, just for budget purposes, when would you think this would be, would this be done in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen?
Twenty twenty probably.
Twenty twenty, or twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, they're not going to be done in twenty eighteen, that was pretty stupid, wasn't it? It's twenty twenty, okay. All right, so that would be in next year's budget, so, because we're going into the budget cycle, so.
So would I first need the town attorney to render an opinion on that before we speak to Mr. Bettina, is that the case?
Yeah, I'll also talk to him, I mean, if you've got any numbers on like how much the area is, I mean, we've got probably some big, we have blacktop data right now for this year.
It's roughly six thousand square feet.
Six thousand square feet.
How wide does that road have to be?
What's that?
How wide is that road right there, twenty-five feet, thirty feet?
No, it's probably, you know, without.
Well, the deteriorated shoulders, it could be up to thirty depending on the shoulders.
So it's a hundred and sixty by twenty-five is only four thousand square feet?
Well, I was going beyond up to the grading limits that we had done, I thought that's what we talked about last time, which is about two hundred feet.
Well, I mean, there's not much, there's not much we can do tonight.
Yeah, I think we're pretty much, yeah.
I mean, the, the other, I mean, yeah, the other issue is, and I don't, you know, it might makes, well, we can defer it, just because there's another, other options, because the other question is, does it make sense for the town to keep going and paying the rest of it, so.
Well, that's the, I mean, you have a roadway that extends beyond.
Right.
So you're getting.
So would you want to, you want to defer, I mean, obviously we're going to have to defer this at this point, so. Be a matter of.
Or, or one thing we'd be happy to do is, well, then it gets, comes down to when the town does that, is we would be happy to mill that and place that, but it's not until you do it. Or, or if we were to make, say, a ten thousand dollar contribution for your roadway improvement.
I mean, we're talking about, I mean, we're talking about roughly, roughly fifty-five, fifty-five tons of asphalt. We assume like two inch, two inch overlay over like five thousand square feet, I figure. I mean, at, for like a private person to buy asphalt, put it down, it's probably, I don't know, seventy-five dollars a ton at the most.
He, he got numbers larger than that.
We're talking, we're talking like four thousand dollars, just for the asphalt. If he's, if he's, if he's already saying he's going to, that he would agree to like mill it.
Yeah, he said he would mill it, but he got a number.
So we're talking, so we're talking about four thousand dollars.
Well, he said he'd agree to throw in ten grand.
Well, he, he would, he would give ten thousand dollars in lieu of doing this, during the work, is what he said, so.
Okay.
But he got a number larger than that, so that's kind of why he's asked.
Well, he better put it out to bid then, because.
I mean, if it's four thousand dollars, if you're accurate and he's, he's off with his numbers, I wouldn't mind going ahead and saying yes, but I mean, I, I mean, you know. He had a larger number, but if you're telling me it's four thousand.
Well, I mean, look, I'm just doing a quick here, I'm just doing a quick here on my phone based upon, I mean, you know, we're, you know, we're, most, most towns are putting down asphalt on a, on a, on a contract for seventy-five to seventy-eight dollars like a ton. And that's paying like prevailing like wages, so he's not paying prevailing wages. And I figured, you know, seven, seventy-five a ton, I mean, all right, so let's say it's like five thousand dollars.
So you're saying five thousand's the most?
Seems like it's kind of insignificant in the overall like project, but.
But he had, his number was three times that, that's why I.
Yeah, I would say, I would say like shopping around, well, now, now, that includes like the milling.
No, that was just, that's why I'm here for the material.
Start shopping prices.
So if you're telling me it's only five thousand dollars, I don't think that's a, a big enough number to come back and forth on that, so.
I mean, if that's the case, you know, if you come up with something new, go back and.
I mean, it's not going to really hurt, it's not going to really hurt to wait till the sixteenth anyway.
If you're telling me it's five thousand dollars, I'm not going to.
Well, I mean, he would have to check that out.
Between meeting time and all that, so.
The, the other issue that is somewhat concerning is if we're only paving a hundred and sixty feet, what's going to happen with the balance of the road? So that's an issue because for, between the town board and the planning board, uh, town board and the Highway Superintendent, because, you know, every year we pave between approximately five, the target is to repave five miles of road every year.
Right.
Based on, you know, the app, the last time it was paved and the condition and traffic and things of that nature. So you don't believe Dorothy Heights has, or.
Hackensack.
Hackensack Heights. Has been scheduled to be repaved in the near future.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's going to make a whole lot of sense to just pave, you know, a portion of the road and leave the rest the way it is, so.
But that, but that portion of the road will now have a heavier traffic usage due to the.
That's attributed to the project.
I, I don't disagree, I'm just, I'm just saying that this may now trigger the town.
Right, it's a minimal.
It's mitigation.
Yeah, yes.
Not, not, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that.
Right, I get it, yeah.
If it's approximately five thousand.
Not in that range, I don't, I don't have a issue with that, we'll move ahead.
So I mean, if you're, if you're fine with that, then I mean.
I'm fine with that if it's five thousand, I mean, I was quoted fifteen, but.
So they go ahead and, they're going to, they'll mill and pave the road?
Mill and pave.
As per the resolution?
As per the resolution.
Okay, all right, so the applicant is satisfied with, with both resolutions then. We need to actually vote first on the resolution of preliminary and final subdivision approval. And says no need to amend it, so you need a motion to, motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show all members, or did I? So we voted on the first one, so for the preliminary and final subdivision, now we have the resolution of site development plan and special permit approval. Applicant is satisfied with the resolution as written, can we get a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, uh, motion's approved. Let the record show to all members, or did I?
Did we get any follow-up on the SWIP from?
No, I got to get that, that's a, a condition.
Okay, that was, you just have to follow up on that, that was just, uh.
Yeah.
To find out who did the review.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is the special use permit for Wappingshire Route 9D Solar Farm.
Rob Ritchie, representing Nexamp.
Good evening. Okay, obviously you've received the resolution from the planner? Obviously no concerns?
No concerns, it aligns with the discussion in previous meetings.
Okay, Mr. Haran, the.
So I looked over the, the, there's a declaration that's filed against the property, which is a combination of stormwater maintenance agreement and a decommissioning plan, which is filed up in the county clerk's office. It references the de, a particular decommissioning plan. One thing that I don't, was, was there a bond, is there a bond in place for decom, no, there's no bond in place for decom?
Don't wish so.
Well, my understanding was, so, um, it, it's just that in the event that it's not decommissioned, the town has the right to go back in and remove, you know, whatever features around the property and, you know, if it's, if it's abandoned. So the only thing that I think would be a condition if it's not in here would be to update the decommissioning plan, which it was a sketch, I believe it was either exhibit B or schedule B, to just include the battery, the, the, the items that are subject to this. So it doesn't have to be refiled up in the county clerk's office, but we should have that.
It says here, Jim, one of the things it says here is under three, under three D. It says, uh, the declaration establishing covenants for the decommissioning of the solar farm shall be subject to review and approval of town engineer and town attorney.
Yep.
Is that good?
That, I mean, that's fine as it is, so, I mean, I've reviewed it and it's fine, it's just that, and I'll, I think I put it in an email. So it just, it just has to be, the, the actual plan has to be up there.
So they got to put up a bond for this?
No.
They don't, does this become a hazmat cleanup if they abandon this due to the batteries?
Um, don't.
No, the, the batteries are contained within, um, you know, liquid proof, airproof.
I mean, if you guys abandon it, then it becomes our problem.
Is that true?
On disposal of the battery.
Yeah, so we got to dispose of it, and then it becomes a hazmat issue. So there's nothing to guarantee that we're not going to be stuck cleaning up your mess.
Whatever costs the town incurs would be a lien against the property for taxes.
But if they abandon it, what do they care? They'll drive, they walk away, we're stuck with it.
Well, we would, again, basically we would remove it, we would put a lien on the property. If the taxes are not paid, then the county pays the town and the county sells the property a tax hit.
And that's just having to put a bond up too, for the cleanup part of it, I mean, hazmat can become very costly to us.
Well, I mean, if, I don't know.
I don't know if that's hazmat, I don't know for sure that that would be disposed of as haz.
Then I think we should look into that, I mean, it is batteries.
I mean, ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of these systems are recyclable, particularly the, the, this type of module, you know, there, we would work through the battery integrator that is providing the equipment to properly dispose of them. You know, you would have that access if there were any reason why Nexamp were not to do that. We're a long-term owner and operator, I, that's not going to be an issue, but certainly as Mr. Haran has, has referenced, right, there, there's already a built-in, you know, provision for the town to put that lien against the property. And Nexamp in this case is the owner of the property, it's not a lease arrangement, so we're very much invested and tied to this project.
I understand, but if you guys, let's say, if something happens and you go bankrupt and you walk away from this project, we eat it. There's nothing that says.
The town is, would not eat it, the town would be made whole for any costs that are incurred, because we put it on the tax bill. And every year Duchess County pays dollar for dollar, every dollar that the town puts on the tax, taxes. So the town would not eat it. The county may take a loss, but the town's not going to eat it.
But in, and we're still going to pay for it one way or the other, to the town or the county, if these guys decide to walk away and there's no guarantee.
Right, I mean, the problem is, you know, we, we'd have to keep track of a bond for twenty some odd years.
I don't know, I, I think that something should be in place to protect us if there is a hazmat cleanup.
I don't, I don't know enough about, you provided, you provided information on, you know, the battery, right?
Yes.
At one point.
Correct.
And I know that David's office had looked at it, but we didn't honestly, so I can't like sit here and say that I know whether it's, you know, it could be potentially haz, hazmat or not, so.
Yeah.
If it's something that you want us to look at, we can look at it quick, but I don't know the answer tonight.
Yeah, I know they're not as, it's, it's not a hazard like the old lead acid batteries.
No, no.
So, you know, that, you know, those I'm familiar with, but the, the newer stuff, whether or not there is a hazard and to what level of it, it's more of a, it's more of a fire hazard, I think, than anything, you know, if they burn, you know, and then, you know, whatever, you know, gets caught up in the runoff into the ground and you have, you know, other issues with the metals getting into the soils.
And we have the appropriate safety procedures in place to mitigate against that, built-in fire suppression, backup safety systems.
So containment unit in case that does all that other stuff fails?
Yeah, the, the containers that they're located in are, you know, air watertight, solid steel. Even, even in the case of a catastrophic event, you're not going to have that leaching. And I think the, you know, the modifications that have been proposed to the existing decommissioning plan would incorporate the added components to the project, to the plan that's already been agreed to for the wider solar project, right? So we would incorporate the additional so, storage equipment, the batteries, any additional associated electrical equipment, additional concrete pads, that would all be wrapped into that.
I mean, if, if it's not hazardous material right now.
We don't know that, though.
I would think they would need to get permits for that though.
Yeah, you would, I mean.
Are you guys happy with that then, if you're good with it, then?
If it's, if it's not a, if it's not deemed to be a hazardous material now to bring on site, and I haven't seen.
So how about if we say that, okay, for now, we assume it's not hazardous, but if we find out later on it is hazardous, we put a rider in there that these guys have to put up a bond or something to be responsible for this?
I mean, if you want, I mean, if you, if you want, we could, we could certainly check this out if you wanted to table this until the next meeting. I mean, it's up, it's, you know, it's up to the planning board.
Is there a placard on the container when they move it there?
There are safety placards on it, I can't comment on the exact number. But I believe that was in the documentation that we provided prior to the previous meeting, that we did not receive questions on from the town.
I mean, the, I, I.
And I don't know, I don't know if David's office, like had looked at it, I know that.
Yeah, I don't know, what he didn't do is know, in the previous review, I don't remember seeing anything regarding that.
But that's not to say that if, if there is, if there is a valid, you know, like, that valid concern waiting.
I think you could certainly adopt the resolution subject to a condition that we investigate that it's not a hazardous material and if it's, if we find out that what's proposed is currently hazardous material. I don't, I don't believe, I've never seen anything that's indicated that, you know, these battery systems are hazardous materials. So I think we could adopt the resolution subject to a condition that, you know, if.
Adopt the resolution, if we adopt this with an addition.
Added condition.
Would be letter, you know, we'd add it as letter E on section three of the resolution, that we need to review.
Well, I think you just say, you know, proof from the applicant that it's not.
Right, that it's not, that it's not a hazardous material, it's not required to have containment and would not require remediate, you know, a bond to be put up in order to handle remediation in the future. Because I think that would be the, I think that's where the concern comes in, but as long as it's not listed as a hazardous material today, that's what we're more or less looking for.
Right, because we can't, I, I don't think it's appropriate to put a condition that should it be a hazardous, be deemed a hazardous material in the future, that they're going to have to post a bond, because at that point, that could be ten years from now, so, no.
Okay, would you be, would that be okay with you if we had that? And then you, in the interim, you can go ahead and provide us with the documentation for that? I, you know, that it's not considered, you know, a hazard?
What would be the threshold for it being a hazard, I guess like.
No, no, we're just, we're just saying is currently, so for example.
Listed as a hazardous material.
You know, New York State DEC has certain items that are deemed to be hazardous materials. EPA has certain items that are deemed to be hazardous materials that, you know, if you're going to truck them on a highway, you've got to have the hazardous material placards, you know, so chlorine gas or, you know, so there's a certain list of things that are deemed to be hazardous materials.
And what would be the added value of the bond outside of, you know, the lien structure that's already in place?
It would just, you would just then have to, basically, if it's, if it's a hazardous material, you would have to give us, and here's, because this is the other problem, you'd have to give us an estimate of how much it would have to, have to cost to dispose of it. I mean, the only.
But I guess those costs are already covered under the existing decommissioning plan.
Under, you know, the lien.
Under the lien structure.
Right, it is, so, I mean, but, so, I mean, that's the problem with, the problem with the bond, the biggest problem with the bond is we're talking about.
Years.
Years from now.
Right. This would go on for, right, yeah, go on for twenty years.
Particularly with respect to depositing, you know, I mean, twenty years ago, if you had a TV set, you could have just basically put it in your garbage can, well, you can't do that now. So, you know, I don't, I don't know how.
How you would even come up with, come up with an estimate.
Right.
And, you know, we can certainly provide that documentation, I would put forward, you know, the information that we have provided to date in terms of decommissioning and disposal.
I mean.
Is, is covers, you know, it talks about recycling, it doesn't talk about hazardous materials disposal.
That's what I would think, I mean, I would think, my, my suspicion without seeing it, I don't, is that it's not a hazardous material? If it can be recycled, like.
There are lithium ion batteries that are in there, right?
Yeah.
And then the fire suppression system is really all that's in the container.
So.
It's probably a very similar battery to a car.
No.
The lithium.
So why don't we add that condition in about?
Just have them provide us with documentation.
That would have to be like reviewed. That would have to be, like, reviewed.
To be, to be reviewed by the planner and engineer.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so that'll be added as condition E, all right? Let's submit. Let's submit documentation. Okay, so.
So, I just Googled some, lithium, lithium ion batteries, it seems to be, um, that the only re- restriction on them is that they can't be shipped by air. There was a, uh, an air crash down in Florida where, um, they were shipping, um, I believe it was laptops, and the batteries overheated and caused a fire in the, uh, in the cargo bay. So, that seems to be the only hazardous restriction on tri- according to the P M, uh, the, uh, P H M S A, so that's the only, that's the only restriction on lithium batteries. And I don't think we're gonna be flying them anywhere.
So, if everybody's good with that?
Yeah, we'll have them-
Yeah, let's, why don't we put it in anyways?
We'll throw the condition on there, I mean, as long as you're okay with that, and you provide us the documentation for review by the, by both the planner and engineer, um, assuming they've signed, you know, once they're good with what you've submitted, um, you know, then I'll be able to go ahead and, uh, you know, sign the resolution, okay?
Okay.
All right, so, at this point, we, um, need a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is, uh, site plan, law consolidation, and special use permit for guardian temperature-controlled building.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Frank Rattle, project manager for Guardian Self-Storage. I was before you, probably a year and a half, two years ago, we received site plan approval and subdivision approval to demolish the existing Mineki Building and enlarge it to about five thousand square feet. The board has graciously granted extensions of time to us, and during that time, we found out that our original estimates for the demolition and the rebuild were much higher than, uh, were, were, our estimates were lower than the hard numbers that came in. So, we made a financial decision not to do that, we just wanna do the same project using the existing footprint. The existing building will stay there, we'll remodel it. The site plan will stay the same. The building doesn't move, the building as it sits right now will be done, we're gonna just redo the facade. As a matter of fact, before I made the application, I had a meeting with Mrs. Roberti, Roberti. Uh, I had the subdivision plan already with the Mylar, but she suggested not filing it, wait to go through this process first and submit everything all at once. I have to agree with that. The county has indicated there's a matter of local concern, uh, I have received Mr. Sotero's letter, he doesn't have any concerns. I did receive a copy of a letter from the town's planner, uh, bringing up four items. Lighting, the lighting is going to be the same as proposed and was approved before. There's gonna be a wall pack on the back of the building that just shines to the rear of the property, not facing Route Nine at all. And in the front, we're going to just have some soffit recess light coming down, nothing will shine on the road. Uh, that's what was proposed before and the board approved, uh, we would ask that, um, photometrics be dispensed with. The signage, uh, the signage is the same as before, we can submit details of that, uh, signage. We'll just copy it from what was there before, but we're not changing the signage at all. Elevations, uh, Frederick Clark suggested that the colors be placed on the rendering for the elevation. I have to agree with him, that was an oversight by us. We've already had our architect prepare a new plan, it shows the colors. Uh, you know, the brickwork is going to be gray, the vinyl siding is gonna be white, the top is going to be ephesus, and it's gonna be charcoal cover color. The end brickwork here, that's pretty neat, but we, we did this with another building. We put stucco or ephesus on the side of the building, and then they lay a stencil over it, and paint it, so when you remove the stencil, it looks like bricks.
Yeah.
Uh, we did it on another one of our buildings in the city of Poughkeepsie, it came out quite nice. And lastly, uh, he brought up site distance. Route Nine is not a town road, however, the, uh, when you leave this property, you can only take a right. You're looking south on Route Nine, and there is an unobstructed view of at least a half a mile. Uh, so I would submit that site distance is not really a consideration. Can I answer any questions from the board or the consultants?
We had a question on the landscaping, correct?
Yes, go ahead.
Between, especially, was it the south side?
Well, actually both sides.
Both sides, yeah, both sides.
Pardon me?
The landscaping on both sides?
Uh, we're proposing anything on the sides of the building, we're proposing landscaping in the front.
Yeah, well, they were also looking at the, um-
Cleanup between the properties.
Because right now, yeah, there's a lot of overgrown brush and everything on, on both the, the north and south ends of the building.
Clean that up?
Yeah, that's, yeah, they'd look to, you know, to see that, or, you know, or if there's gonna be any landscaping added to those areas also.
Our, our present plan was to clean it up, uh, it's unsightly, and we wanna make the site really sharp. We wanna be proud of the site, we want you to be proud that you gave us approval, if you do. Uh, so we do wanna clean up the, the ends. Uh, if you want landscaping, we can put something together, but our intent is to clean up the sides.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see a landscape plan, um, you had sent, mentioned there a second ago that you were proposing something in the front for landscaping?
Yeah, it's on the plan that was submitted, we have, we've got, uh, a planter that's gonna be right underneath the sign, and we've submitted that we're gonna have some pasta there, and holly bushes.
That's what's gonna be in the front of the building. We didn't plan on anything on the side, because that's all blacktop right now. But those, that one bank has gotta go, that's gotta be cleaned up, and on the, the south side.
Blacktop, yeah, in between the two buildings.
We would agree to, we would agree to clean that up, that's not a problem.
Okay. All right, so I mean, if we, you know, get those things taken care of, the, uh, obviously the colors, I mean, we're kinda interested in that.
Yeah, we have a new plan, you haven't seen it yet, we can submit that with the colors on there.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I take that as-
This is very similar to the last application, I would also ask if we could waive public hearing, and perhaps just go right to the, to the plans.
Yeah, well, we, we discussed, um, we need to discuss how, about waiving the public hearing. Um, I guess at this point, I mean, what's everybody's feeling? Go ahead and waive the public hearing, get a motion then, I guess, to, take a vote, a motion to waive the public hearing on this, uh,
I'll make that motion.
On this amendment to the original site plan?
I'll make that motion.
Okay?
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor? Any, okay, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, so.
What we could do is on this site plan, uh, where the, the bank is, banks and the sides are indicated, if it's, if it's, uh, acceptable, we can make notation notes on the plan, exactly what we're gonna do to clean up those areas, and it would be a note on the plan, so it'll be enforceable, to make sure that we continually, continuously keep it in check.
Well, I mean, obviously you're gonna make the, the resubmission with the color, you know, renderings, um-
And we'll add that.
Add the landscaping to the plan.
Yep.
I don't think there was, uh, there was, there's nothing else we were missing, correct?
Yeah.
I think every, everything else, I believe, was similar to the, um, to the original approval. Just that the, for the most part, the building was smaller.
Yes, it's the only change.
Okay.
When would you like me back?
Well, whenever you're gonna be ready.
We can submit this next week, if you wanted to put it on for your next meeting, or, I don't know what your agenda is looking for.
How quick, we, we have quite a bit on for the next meeting, correct?
Well, if Mr. Lapine's gonna be here, maybe I should do another meeting, he can be a little verbose sometimes.
The what?
Mr. Lapine can be verbose.
He's done.
Four for next. Okay.
Well, it's also a short turnaround, so, I, I think, if we put it on for October, and maybe have the planner-
Planner write the resolution.
Yeah.
All right, so if you want, so, well, we'll get the board to vote on the resolution, um, but if you get everything put together in the next package, I don't know if everybody's happy with, with what's been submitted, uh, should we get a motion to authorize the planner to write the resolution for the-
I make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we'll probably see you then on the first meeting in October.
What day, would that be, be?
Seven?
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, our next item on the agenda is, um, N R P Holding Tractor Supply Company and Retail Store.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Neil Alexander, a partner at Cuddy and Fader. So, we were last before you on July fifteenth, at which time you adopted a secret negative declaration and closed the public hearing on this matter. We appeared in front of the Z B A subsequently, and attained the area variance as to parking that was necessary for the project on July twenty-third. Uh, we had several offline conversations and one in-person meeting with staff, which I think is what, um, led to the comment memos that you hopefully received from F P Clark, essentially that they're, they're, they're done. Um, I think the items that they listed relative to the town attorney are easily, um, conditions of approval, you know, relative to, um, easements, and I think we received comments from C P L and Pete's group on the SWIP, which are, which are in process to be revised, and obviously would have to get done in order for, um, your, your, your schmo to send up the N O I to D E C. So, I, I think we've addressed everything from a staff level, I don't know if you have any additional questions left of us. Uh, Mr. Cassidy's here, if you wanna go over the plans, but I, our perspective is I think we've hit everything from, from that standpoint.
Yeah, I, I believe, I think everything that we've, um, you know, that we've discussed has been addressed.
Okay.
I also believe that staff is also, well, somewhat satisfied.
Just address the issue of sewer.
Okay, um, so, the plans that we've always shown you, assumed that we were going to use a pump, um, and go out to Route Nine, we took a detour, um, and had great meeting with Camo, 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 sorry. Um, with, with staff as well, and they were great, and they went out, and it, it turned out that the, um, sewer run as built was a little bit different than the contemplated, and as a result, there's about a fifty-foot gap between the end of our property going north to the manhole on Accura's property. Um, although we were successful in doing a cross-easement for, um, the common drive, with the strip of a driveway issue, and that was done when we went back, um, to just be able to essentially run the fifty feet instead of going to Route Nine, we were unsuccessful in being able to, um, reach terms, and we went back in, a lot, because we had preferred to do that way, um, but we weren't able to reach terms, so now we're back to doing a pump station and coming forward to Nine, which is the way you always saw it. It was a, a result of meeting with Camo, um, that they said, I, I think you guys could reach, you know, get there, and we, we looked at the gravity feed, we looked at the inverts, and we were just able to make it without having to raise the toilet to the second floor. Um, but, uh, we were just able to get it, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get to terms with Accura, so. We tried very hard.
All right, so, and the, the plans then would be-
It's the same plan you've always seen, we just took a detour for a little while as a result of suggestions from Camo, and just came up a little short.
But if the town, but it, uh, when, when the planning board is gonna consider, um, conditional approval on this, we need to have the old utility plan showing the sewage pump back in the drawing set, so that we're approving the correct-
Correct, I think that Jim did make a-
Not a big deal.
Submission of that.
Yeah, the grab-
I apologize.
The current, the current plans that we have today that we commented on were based upon other gravity, so.
Right.
It's just you need to take out one sheet and-
Yep, we will go out and do that.
Insert the other, so, um, yeah, so we had, you know, we had some comments, I think that most of them, uh, you know, were technical, you know, the SWIP, we did take, uh, we did take a, um, you know, a look at it, I don't think there's anything in there that's, um, you know, major, if you wanna, you know, if your office wants to have, um, a discussion with our person who reviewed it, that's fine, we can do that. But I don't think there's, I mean, there isn't anything in here that, you know, creates any, um, major issues. So, um, one thing I brought up to the planning board in our, um, pre, pre-meeting here, and I did not put in my comments, but I circled it on the, on the, on the set of plans, was, um, I had, I had noticed that the light pole bases that are gonna be sticking up above the ground were slated to be painted yellow, and I'll defer the board on, you know, the colors, because that's not my bailiwick, but I-
We would like to see them be, just leave them at concrete, be natural, okay?
So, I did not put that in my memo, but if you guys can just fix that before we sign the plans, and we'll-
So, we could have, right, so just leave it the natural concrete color, it would blend in better than the yellow standing out.
So, other than that, I mean, I don't have, there's, you know, again, these are just a lot of, you know, technical things, and I don't, you know, one thing that they have put on the map, uh, they've got, as, as you know, they've got quite a few retaining walls on the site, so they've added standard, um, details, they've given us top and bottom, uh, wall elevations, but, um, there are, uh, very large notes on the map that says on the retaining wall, um, details that the actual design of those walls will be done by a New York State structural engineer, and will be submitted as part of the building permit, permit process. Uh, I don't have a problem with that, because typically, any of these wall, wall manufacturers that, you know, you go to, we do the same thing, where they provide that, like, service if you purchase their, uh, you know, wall system, so, they'll, like, provide all that at the same time that they apply for a permit, so. So, I don't have a problem with that, that all, you know, the technical, like, details aren't, like, provided at this point in time. Is that all right with the board?
Yeah, that's, uh, I've, yeah, it's acceptable with everyone, yeah, that's, uh, that's actually standard-
Yeah.
Practice out there today, yes. All right, um, okay, so, basically, there's really nothing, then, that's a showstopper at this point.
No.
Um, more or less can be included as conditions of approval, uh, for the, um-
Yes.
Right, for this, uh, for this, uh, yeah, site plan, sorry. All right.
Now, do we want, um, assuming you're gonna authorize the planner to prepare, uh, something for one of the-
I was just gonna bring up to the board.
But we do need to have, I don't know, how we, how do we wanna handle, we need to have that one, uh, sheet, like, replaced. I don't know if we need to get fifteen all new sets of plans that, just for, to replace one, like, sheet, but, I mean, I don't think you're planning on making any new, um, submissions to address, you know, our comments, but we do need to have that sheet somehow incorporated in the resolution, so maybe, maybe you just, like, submit that one sheet to replace, you know, the old sheet, and, yeah, maybe, is that acceptable?
Yeah, the board, yeah, the, I don't think the board, nobody on the board wants a copy of that, correct? No, I mean, as long as it's submitted to all the town departments, um, you know, for their approval, that'd be satisfactory.
That would be great.
And that'd be done prior to the, you know, prior to us voting on the resolution, obviously.
Understood.
Yep.
Okay. All right, um, so at this point, um, yeah, we've, we're pretty close on this, uh, can we go ahead, I guess, get a resolution to authorize the planner to, um, to write the resolution for, uh, N R P Holding Tractor Supply Company and Retail Store site plan?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
That's, that's great. Can we come back, so there's a little silly housekeeping issue, so I just want to figure out what... So you technically closed the public hearing on July fifteenth, and there's a sixty-two day window, and I want to give you the right amount of days of extension on that. So can we come back?
Just go ahead and...
Because if you came back, the, was it the eighteenth is the next meeting?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, I'm sorry. So if we came, can we come back on the sixteenth for that resolution? And then I'll give you the one-day extension that's needed. I'm being hyper-technical, but I just want to, you know, be fair with everybody.
Yeah, so to waive the, yes, to waive the sixty-two day window?
Yes, exactly. We consent and waive the sixty-two day window and we'll come back on the sixteenth.
You'll come back on the sixteenth, okay. All right. And Jim, we all need to vote on that, right? To waive that requirement?
They, they...
They're wa, they're waiving it, so...
They're waiving it.
That's what I'm saying, they're waiving their, okay. All right.
So we will see you on the sixteenth and thank you.
So, hold on, I don't think you're going away so quick.
Oh, I got one more right after.
You have the next item on the agenda.
Yes, that's true, too.
Which is the Accurate Tractor Supply Cross Access Easement Plan. Okay. Which, yeah, I don't think, actually, we didn't have anything on this.
Our comments were, our comments were...
Were satisfied.
Were satisfied.
I don't believe David had any comments for this because I don't oversee and...
I don't think so either.
Let me just double check real quick here. So we've...
I think if I remember correctly, he deferred to the town attorney on the easement. And he deferred to the highway department on distances.
Okay. Now, it doesn't look like there was a...
Yeah, he just had two counts. Because he combined, he had one, one review letter for both.
Okay.
He did not have a separate review letter for Accura.
Okay. All right. So at this point in time, I guess, everybody's satisfied with the Cross Access Easement Plan. This also needs to be, we also need to authorize the planner to write the resolution for this. So we need a motion.
So moved.
Motion's made. Seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And we'll have that also for the sixteen.
And I guess the waiver on that one.
And your way of...
Yes, and our waiver on that applies for that as well. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is price ground-mounted solar panels.
Good evening, Nicholas Gogowski with Infinity Solar Systems.
Good evening. Okay, so obviously, you've received the letter from, from the planner?
Yes.
Regarding this, okay. So we do need to do a little discussion because it's, from what you've submitted, it looks like there's...
Gotcha.
As per, let me get back to my note here. Yeah, so as per section two forty dash fifty-seven C four A, it requires that, you know, if you have, if they don't have a hundred-foot distance to their property line, that they need to provide screening for the neighbors, more or less.
So I actually have pictures here that were taken at the site survey that show better images of pretty much all around where the array is going to be going. And I could pass this to you guys if you want to take a look.
Yeah, for the board and also we need one for the secretary.
Sure.
To put into the record. Thank you.
So the initial picture right there is pretty much exactly where the panels are going to be located, right behind that fence. You can see that to the left of the picture, there is already shrubbery there that would provide screening. In the rear, there is screening. And to the right of the array, proposed array, rather, there are some barns and sheds over there. But if you guys needed additional screening, we wouldn't be opposed to providing some shrubbery, evergreen staggered, or something along those lines.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, that would be in line with the town's requirements for screening. So that would be allowable. Okay, and on the left side is...
There's shrubbery there pretty much throughout the entire line, the property line.
Okay.
You can see in the first picture, unfortunately, I don't have another picture that goes right to the house, but it's pretty much all in that same uniform.
I'd like to see something that would maintain its shielding during the wintertime when the leaves, when they're deciduous and things are bare. I'd like something to...
Something else there. Sure.
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay, all right, so I mean, we'd need that. So, I mean, you'd have to update these plans to provide, to show the screening. The other item we need to do also is we need to schedule for a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
If I'm correct with that, Jim, that's also a requirement for this.
Let me pull it up, I believe it is... While he's, while he's looking that up, you should probably also discuss the proposed height of, you know, the trees that you might be looking for, only because I've had other applications where that wasn't done and the trees that were planted were pretty small, so...
How tall are these solar panels?
They won't be higher than twelve feet off of the ground.
Wow.
So you, so you need a fifteen-foot tree?
Yes.
Wow.
And a lot of them.
They are located, the panels are located pretty deep into the backyard. And like I said, the only time you're really going to see them is if the neighbors are in their backyard, halfway in their backyard, and they're, you know, trying to find them. Otherwise, they're not going to be seen from the road or anything else like that.
What is the area?
Why are they so high off the ground?
Well, the way that we stack them, it's two and a half feet off of the ground is where the panel starts, and then you stack three high landscapes. It's about another, you know, nine feet off the ground with the maximum tilt that we're in.
What's the area of the solar panels going to be?
It's about fifty-five long and about ten feet deep.
Why not put them on the house?
That was my suggestion, too. The homeowner prefers to have a ground-mounted system, doesn't want to, you know...
The trees alone are going to...
I, well, I agree. I mean, if it was up to me, I would, I would put it on the house, too. I mean, we're typically ninety-nine percent of our installations go on the house. But the homeowner suggested this and thought we'd give it a shot.
Okay.
So, I mean, obviously, then the height, you're good, so the height of the tree, then, you're agreeing to...
Twelve feet.
Twelve-foot-high trees.
Evergreens, sure. That would be fine.
What's the distance that the trees have to be apart for screening?
Yeah, I'm not an expert on it, but...
I believe it's, I believe they're fifteen-foot on center spacing is what we've, I know we've done with other projects.
Yeah, we'd have, I'd have to check, we'd have to check, you know, with David. I don't remember.
Yeah.
Because you got to give him, you got to give him a certain amount of room, you know, to grow.
Right, because they're actually, you know, obviously eventually grow, you know, close together.
Right, right.
The type that they can't lose them, come over branches.
Right.
Right. I mean, I want to say it's fifteen to twenty, maybe. I don't, you know, depending on, depending on the height and, you know, the species, but I'm not an expert at that. So I guess they'd, I guess they'd have to like propose something for, you know, for David's office to look at. But, yeah, those are going to be some pricey trees.
How many is he going to need? Six, ten?
About fifty-five feet, right?
So site plan approval is required.
Okay.
And the general provisions of Article nine apply, so I don't know. I mean, the general provisions allow for a waiver, but, you know, I don't know if the board wants to grant a waiver or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, obviously, it's all residential in that area.
I'd like to see a public hearing on that.
So would I. Just for the neighbors there. So we're going to, so we're going to go ahead and schedule a public hearing.
Right. There wouldn't be any way to get around the public hearing, just because if we did have to schedule a public hearing, I'm guessing the next meeting would be for October sixteenth, I heard earlier?
Uh, no, I believe it's October the seventh.
October seventh?
Yep.
If that's, we pass the public hearing, what the next step would be?
The next, after the public hearing, we close the, assuming that there's, you know, not a lot of people coming out, but as long as the concerns are addressed that night, we can authorize the planner to write a resolution, you know, which then could be voted upon at the following meeting.
And that following meeting would be?
Uh, that would be...
Two weeks from October twenty-first.
Yeah. And the reason that I did ask to bypass the public hearing would be, at this point, if it's October twenty-first, by the time we get everything approved, assuming everything goes according to plan, then we would have to, you know, apply for the building permit. By the time we would get that, we're talking probably somewhere around the middle of November. And then at that, that time of the year, it's the end of the season for us to possibly even trench to do a ground mount. The ground would be frozen. We wouldn't have to be, we wouldn't be able to do the installation again until probably April of next year, then.
Yeah, I mean, that's your choice, I don't know. I mean, these are going to be, you know, auger, they're just going to be piles driven into the ground?
Yeah. But, I mean, yeah, they're going to be drilled into the ground, but we still do need to trench a ways away for, you know, the electrical conduit to run to the house to hook up to the meter, to the panel. So that's why I asked if it would be possible to bypass the public hearing.
It's all sad there anyway, right? So it's not like...
I mean, we haven't, I mean, the issue comes in is we haven't had a lot of the residential ground-mounted solar panels. They changed the law, I believe it was two years ago?
Probably three years ago now.
Three years ago now. We had one application and the applicant never came back. You know, they believe the regulations were changed, you know, because, you know, to give the neighbors notice, you know, so they know what's going on.
I don't have it written, but I do know that the neighbors are aware. The one neighbor is actually doing the trench for the homeowner, so...
Right, and I understand. I mean, it's, but there's a process.
I understand.
And it's in, you know, they've incorporated it to the town law. I believe that, you know, the board, you know, feels that it should be, you know, put out to a public hearing, let, you know, let the neighbors, you know, comment if, you know, if there are any comments, I mean, maybe not. I mean, if nobody shows up, obviously, then, you know, we're probably looking at the, you know, the twenty-first, you know, for an approval. So, I mean, by, you know, by October seventh, you're pretty much going to know where, where you're going. So, I mean, it's your choice. I, you know, board's kind of...
Well, it's not really, it's actually your choice.
Right, right, the property owner's choice, but, yeah. But they're the ones that, you know, are pushing you to come in and do that. You know, fortunately, we have to, you know, we have to basically follow what's, you know, within the zoning code.
So then, I guess, we're set for a public hearing?
Well, so, yeah, so if you're agreeing to move forward, we'll go ahead.
Definitely going to move forward, yeah.
Because it sounded like you were getting hesitant there for a while.
Oh, well, I mean, as long as I'm here, I, you know...
All right, so let's get a, I need a motion to, to set the public hearing for October the seventh?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
We'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Just touch base with the secretary.
Will do.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you.
All right. All right. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Old Hope Well Commons amended subdivision.
Good evening, Mark Day, Day Engineering. We're here tonight to talk about the subdivision, which would create the commercial parcel, break it off from the existing apartment parcel, and also offer the right-of-way for the new Sargent-Palmateer extension to Old Hope Well Road. That's the submission we've made tonight. I don't know if everybody remembers when we did this apartment complex. We had submitted this as a design. We didn't file the map yet because the issue with the Sargent-Palmateer Way was partly owned by the county, partly owned by the DOT. Through an elongated process, the DOT finally conveyed it to the county. The county finally conveyed it to the town. So we're in that limbo area. We wish to start constructing a road. We do have our Department of Public Works county permit to create the entrance on Old Hope Well Road. There is a little bit of logistics between, we have to close as well as we construct it. Once the town accepts the road, then we're going to move the barricades from here to Sargent-Palmateer Way and then scarify that roadway. That's pretty much the application.
Okay. I refer to staff for comments.
Mark, you had said you already have the county, the county permit? So the plans, the plans have already been...
Submitted for the entrance?
Approved, yeah.
They've been there since.
All right, can we get, I don't know if our office has ever, you know, received a copy?
I believe in you guys are involved, yeah. We've contacted, I think Tom knows, Tom.
Because I talked to Tom. I'll talk to him again, but as far as I know, he hadn't received a set of plans because we just like to look at it because obviously it's going to be a town road.
Yeah, the other thing we did, we submitted the bond amount for the road so we can set the engineering inspection fees.
Okay.
So if you could ask Tom, because we've been trying to get ahold of him to get that, because they want to start, we want to have you guys out there, obviously, to start looking at the work.
Okay, so that was the bond?
Yep, the bond amount for the road.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, so I guess that the plans have already been done and that one of our comments was, are we looking at doing a subdivision too like early? Because maybe, maybe the right-of-way, you know, would change based upon the detailed plans, but you're saying that the plans are done?
No, we, we had a meeting, we've been having meetings about the logistics of when to give you guys this offer session for the road. So, I mean, Jim was involved, I mean, this is...
I know Tom was at some meetings, too, I know.
Right, he was at the last one, but I believe, oh, I'm sorry, Lisa was there. Jim was away. But the agreement was to get this on the agenda so that we could get this thing transferred. Because right now, all, all pieces are in play. The, and Jim may be able to comment better, but there's two pieces that are going to be conveyed back to anything.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point in time, they're not... It, in some respects, it doesn't necessarily matter. Because they are, I guess, they're separate. It will be, whether we include them in one deed or whether we include them, or, there'll be one deed, whether it's one parcel or two parcels, it'll be, you know, kind of irrelevant. But basically, the way this will work, and I explained in the pre-meeting, we did a similar thing with Adams when Adams put the driveway in on a dead-end section of Old Route nine on the east side of Route nine. So what will happen is, once there will be an offer of session, meets and bounds offer of session for the, for the road, that will be dedicated to the town, which is currently a portion of the property that's owned by the applicant. And then that will be, that'll be recorded in the county clerk's office with the subdivision plot. The, there's, this is a little busy, we probably got to clean it up a little bit. But in essence, what's going to happen is we'll show the area that's going to be, the area that will be abandoned, and that will go and become part and parcel of the new lot. And then, um, they, the, have you had a discussion with the county as far as what they wanna see?
Yes, we submitted closure lane, uh, closure details.
Okay.
They want a hardened curb, and then anything behind that, we're gonna scarify.
Okay, so that's one of the, in essence, the, one of the issues is, after you close the road down, what, what's gonna be left there?
Right.
And then we'll have probably something similar on the, the town portion.
Right, we'll, we are constructing that as part of this project.
Right.
To put in a country curb that creates the curb that...
Creates the extension. So that would be on the developer to do.
So, so, you know, that'll be some details, but as, as far as what gets filed in the county as far as the subdivision plot, we're basically just showing the boundaries of the new lot.
Which is inclusive of the piece that's being conveyed.
The piece that's being conveyed, and then there'll have to be details regarding the highway, the new highway construction.
Which is in, it was in the original plan that we submitted for the apartments.
Right, so...
So, Mark, does, does the acres for Lot Two on here of the point seven four nine acres, does that reflect the two parcels that are gonna be?
No, they're not, they're not, they're just shown as the pieces that will be conveyed.
Right.
Okay, so does the map have to be updated to show that, as, as you were saying, that those two abandonments will become part and parcel of the new lot? New Lot Two, and so the acreage is gonna end up being bigger, obviously, for Lot Two, okay.
Now, it will still be a substandard lot, but we apply for a variance.
And there is a variance.
There was a variance granted for that commercial lot, the board remembers.
So, um, and right now, there are no approvals for the lot.
No, no, we didn't see any.
So that would be, that would be something, you know, down the road. I guess the one question that I had regarding the quitclaim parcel two...
Oh, this strip here?
No, no, it's on the north side, on the, it's up here.
Oh, yeah, that's an overlap that...
Oh, deed overlap, okay. Same thing over here, yeah.
Yeah, Steve picked it up, that there's a deed overlap between the counties and what the state and what he also owns.
And same thing on, on Old Hope Well is, when we were doing the waterline work on Old Hope Well Road, a lot of the deeds, um, the, the, it's the old-new Hamburg turnpike, so the right-of-way is actually sixty-six feet wide. And a lot of deeds assume that it was a fifty-foot right-of-way. So there's a lot of problems with a lot of the deeds that are along Old Hope Well Road, because they call out actually more property than is actually owned. So, I mean, the quitclaim deeds are good for purposes of title, but...
Okay. All right, so, I guess then some of the, mostly answers have been, or questions have been answered at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only, the only thing will be, um, a separate drawing sheet with, what I think we'd like to see is, um, a separate drawing sheet showing pavement widths, and I guess also, there's gonna be a...
That's actually on, it's in the apartments. If you look at the site plan, that was all of that.
I, I think it should be put, take it over and make it a separate sheet. Do one with just, sheet one will just be the parcels and then sheet two. And then also, that's gonna have to, I understand there's an easement that's gonna be retained by the town, there's certain utilities.
For the waterline and such.
So, and that should be, that should be shown on the first plat, the first sheet of the plat. You know, whatever easements are gonna be retained.
Okay.
But other than that, um, and then I think that's it. You know, the details, some of the details as far as, um, the closure.
Now, meets and bounds for, for that, uh, for the two parcels that are gonna be conveyed? Now, you said, now you said that there was already, that, that, that the one closest to the county road has already, already been done, right?
Yeah, Steve is, Steve Alex did...
Steve Alex is working on it.
I believe he did them already. I think there's meets and bounds descriptions that were already done for all of these.
Now, do those have to be on here, or, I mean, this is...
They should be.
This is gonna be, this is gonna end up being filed in the clerk's office, right?
I think he has all meets and bounds on it. I don't, he wouldn't put the description on there, though, typically, it's a separate sheet.
No, 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 not the description.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's some...
Yeah, and he's got the meets and bounds.
I guess the one question...
Yeah, but just on, just on the, uh, just on the lot like Two Side, wouldn't there be complete, uh, meets and bounds for the, for the two?
Oh, that, that actually might be a good, um, cause you're probably, the county may want, want that. You may want a meets and bounds of the, um, of the lot that will be created.
Oh, of the new, you mean with the radiuses and stuff?
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, maybe he has, maybe he has to show like an inset or something that...
Yeah, I'll talk to Steve. He's, he said he had, he was gonna refine this.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I, because I think the county's gonna wanna see that for the tax map.
Yep.
Yeah, we, right. So then there's only gonna be one, there's only gonna be one tax map number for Lot Number Two. There's not gonna be a little funky strip there where it used to be Sargent Palmetier.
Right, cause this is now, and I don't know, and this is, I guess, a discussion I'll have to have with the county, is how they treat abandonments up there. I don't, I'll have to go back and check and see what Adams looks like on the tax map now.
Okay.
So, um, make sure they picked it up.
Yeah, this should be one lot now.
Right.
Right, right, exactly, that's what I was thinking.
And whether you...
Probably offer is a blanket easement over this for the waterline, because there's a waterline in here.
Yeah.
So we're probably just gonna give you a blanket easement over that old right-of-way.
Cause we were talking about putting parking in there for the park too, so...
Yeah, so you could access, uh, Sargent Palmetier Park.
I mean, that's up to you, whether you wanna make it more refined or a blanket.
I think we'd rather leave it open, because then it serves two purposes.
Okay.
It's a blanket easement for the waterline, and it's also for the parking.
Okay. That works too.
My question is, does this need a public hearing, since it's already been through a public hearing, to create the road?
Think, we had a public hearing for the entire project.
Well, we had a public hearing for, there is subdivision approval.
And the site plan approval.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, we don't have to have another public hearing for this then, cause it's basically in line with the original...
It's an amendment to the original.
It's just an amendment to the plan, just to, to hash out the...
Cause te, I guess technically, right, you only have to have a public hearing on the preliminary.
Original, that's right.
You don't, you don't have to have it on the final.
You don't have to, you can waive it.
Right, so to the extent that this is consistent with the preliminary, then you don't need a new public hearing.
Yeah, I think the intent of this plan has always been the intent that we described to the board.
As I say, it's, it's been the same all the way through. It's just, I mean, this is just now hashing out the, you know, those open-ended issues with the, you know, with the, the parcel that the state had.
Correct.
Yeah, and we're just pretty much do, waiting, you know, waiting for them to convey it to the county, and then the county to convey it to the town. But, you know, now we can move forward with, I guess, you know, putting all the pieces together to get to a final, um, you know, to a final map.
What it looks like, so...
Now, is there gonna be any drainage in this?
No, no, we're gonna actually remove the pavement, uh...
No, I mean, in the, in the new road that's being created.
Um, yeah, we actually show that on the site plan. We could show it on sheet two, which would show the improvements.
Right, I mean, I think what we should do is sheet two with all of...
Just the improvements to the road.
Yeah, and if there's any water mains or any, you know, water lines or anything in the...
No water, just...
Okay. Yeah, any, anything that's in, you know, if you show the right-of-way and then also add your pavement and all of that.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
Okay. So at this point, we don't, we're basically, we don't need to take any action on this yet?
You gotta get an updated map first.
Yeah.
But do we do a resolution for this, or...
Well, we'll do a resolution when we get a new map.
Okay.
And then it'll just be an amendment.
All right, so we'll come back with the revised plan and...
I mean, even if you just wanna circulate it, you know, kind of bounce it off. Pete Nice, Pete, Pete's concern and my, my concern have, has kinda been, you know, the county for, for months and months kept saying, we want site distance, we want, you know, so we never wanted to go further until we knew where that was gonna actually end up.
Yep.
And if that's, you know, so whatever, whatever the county has approved, just show that and we may have to, I'd like Pete, Pete's office to take a look at the inside curve where it hits pop, um, you know, the existing town road. That may be the only...
Has the fire department, again, I know that, I know that I'm, I'm coming in late on this, but has, you know, the fire department...
About, what, eight years later?
I mean, has, has the fire department, like, weighed in on the curve there?
Yeah, this has not changed. This roadway has been this way.
No, but I mean, you know, the curve to get back to...
I don't know what the fire department's saying, I mean, I...
Yeah, it was reviewed by the Fire Prevention Bureau.
It was?
And they, yeah, they had no issue with the, uh, with the realignment of the road.
Okay.
Yeah. Actually, things have actually improved for them. The truck, the ladder truck they have now is actually, uh, the newer one is actually better fitted for, you know, for some of the windy roads. Doesn't have as much backswing on it anymore. Basically, just a, you know, forty-five foot, yeah, truck, so it's not that bad.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll reset, we'll bounce it off you guys, and if you feel comfortable, we will resubmit.
And I'll follow up on that bond amount, Mark, tomorrow, yeah?
Yeah, the thing is, is these guys wanna get started, and of course, we wanna have your involvement in it, you know, as far as inspections. So, Anthony's anxious to pay his fee, to get you guys involved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is the Portius Lot Line Consolidation.
Captain Belli Architect, representing, uh, Portius, who owns the two lots on New Road. To refresh everyone's memory, we were here several months ago. We have two half-acre lots.
Oh, speaking to a microphone, so that everybody else can hear you.
Uh, we have two half-acre lots that, um, actually front, one of the lots fronts on New Road, the other lot behind it fronts on some old paper roads going back to the twenties and thirties. We don't even know who owns the right-of-ways, the roads, et cetera, et cetera. So we came before this board, if you will, several months ago, to turn the two lots, so that they both front, uh, on New Road, still half-acre each. Uh, we were gonna extend New Road, our pavement to town specs. We had spoken to Mr. Bettina. But subsequent to that, I, I think, and when Bob Gray was still here, speaking with the health department, with the owner, it was an uphill battle perhaps to, to get two septic on the, on the two small lots. And there may have been some legal issues as well, in terms of who owns this, that, and everything else. So what we're here before you, this evening, is we just wanna consolidate those two half-acre lots, make them one lot, still accessed off of New Road, and I have a one-acre lot off of, off of New Road. My drive, my, my New Road, uh, as illustrated on this plan here, goes maybe twenty feet beyond, um, the corner. So I, I guess technically, I have access to that, that, that lot. The extension of the road, which we had proposed, the developer was going to, uh, increase the length of that road at his expense, but that's off the table. He's not extending the road, because he doesn't need it and there's no reason to do it. So that's, that's off the table. So I'm looking to combine two half-acre lots into one, as you can see, outlined in pink. That's it.
Okay, so all right, at this point in time, it's just to, just to consolidate the lots?
It's a lot line consolidation, that's correct.
Okay. All right, um, I guess I'm just reviewing, I just, I think it's the, the planner, and it looks like the engineer has no concerns.
Yeah, Pete had a couple of comments.
Yeah, just a...
All the, yeah.
Which we, which we'd already taken care of, because we had gotten Pete's comments last week. The, uh, the planning board block, the, the owner signature certification block is on there. And then there were no other engineering items, I don't believe.
No.
And we just got David's, he wanted some additional, uh, uh, information on there regarding zoning and a few other notes, which is not a problem.
Right, yeah, his doubt is just gonna get to that, because, yeah.
That's pretty important, yeah. And we haven't had a chance to make that, that change. We're not the authors of this plan here. Mazer, um, Engineering and Survey are, are the ones that prepared that, so it takes a little bit of time to get some of that information. But certainly, we have no objection.
So the map would have to be upgraded to subdivision standards in order for the, for the planning board to consider approval, right?
Yeah.
The one thing that I'd like to see would be the location of the, I believe there's a driveway on the south side of New Road? For, uh...
Okay, so we have two driveways there. One goes to a house, that's the flag lot in the rear, and there, there is a driveway to a house immediately, in an existing house, immediately in front of the flag lot, so...
On the south, on the...
On the south side, opposite me?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
I think there's one...
There is, yeah, one or two houses over there.
I mean, I, I, I went out there and looked at this, and I sat down with Barbara and looked at it, and it's just, it's, it's very squirrely. Um, there's a whole bunch of, um, the road was mapped out, you and I had a discussion about it, and you sent me over some of the information. I think the original plat was sometime from the nineteen twenties or thirties. We couldn't find any indication that the town has ever accepted the road. However, the town has been maintaining it as a town highway, um, for many years. Originally, it was proposed to go through all the way over to Cooper.
Cooper Road, which is behind...
Um, and, you know, one of the discussions that we had is if, you know, the thing to, would make sense would be to continue it all the way to Cooper as it was supposed to. There's a couple of fences, some boats, various other things.
You have the trailer park back there, right? Everybody's familiar with that trailer park?
So the trailer park is, um, part of this road network, I believe, goes through the trailer park. It's, there's driveways that were paper streets, there's buildings that probably never should've gotten building permits. Some question as to what, you know, legitimate road frontage they have. But, you know, in this case, the applicant, you know, has to play the ball where it lies. The only thing that I might wanna see, and I believe these were pretty narrow, roadways, from my recollection.
Uh, New Road?
Yeah.
Well, it is what it is.
No, I'm just saying what the right-of, the right-of-way was.
Well, it's a, it's, um...
Cause it wa, it's not a typical forty-nine and a half.
No, it's, it's, it's not. I mean, again, it, I don't wanna say it is what it is, um, and, um...
It scales off as, uh, forty, forty feet on the map.
Oh, is it that wide? Okay.
Okay, so it's close.
Okay. It's wider than I thought it was.
Now, Vinnie, right now, he, he plows all the way to the back. There's a couple of houses further up the road. Matter of fact, one of them's being renovated as we speak, past our lot across the street. Not that it makes any difference to what we're doing here.
The, the only question that I'm suggesting is maybe, and I don't know what, if the highway department wants it, would be an easement for a turnaround at the end of the road.
But, 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 which is fine, but you're not asking me to do that turnarounds to service six other houses in the neighborhood, just because I wanna remove a lot line, so...
No, I, I understand.
You know what I'm saying? So I don't know if that's, if that's gonna be agreeable. We had a better chance before, when we agreed to extend the road... We had a better chance before when we agreed to extend the road, widen the road. We probably could have talked them into some sort of a, not a full turnaround, because we don't have the right-of-way, but something to do that. But like I said, we're getting one house on a, on a lot now instead of two houses on two lots. So, where am I getting the money to, to, to improve a town road when it's not my job to? I know, no, I know what you're saying, I agree a hundred percent. But fortunately, my lot is very self-contained, it doesn't affect any of the paper roads.
Right.
Who knows who owns those areas there, we tried to find out. It's like in limbo, but I don't care, it's not, I don't know if anybody's paying taxes, the town, it's not a road, it's just paper lines, and we couldn't figure it out for, for, for months and months and months. The owner says that, forget about it, it's just a one lot, I want to build a house, let's get out of here. So, that's where we are.
Okay, so I mean, at this point, it's just updating the, updating the current map then?
Map to subdivision standards.
Yeah.
So, is a public hearing required for this? For dissolve it, or not dissolving, basically, I guess I'm dissolving a property line?
Well, I don't think we've done in the past.
It may-
I know it, it comes up, but I think that-
It probably is required now, but by the middle of October, it may not be.
I mean, again, I'm not gonna be argumentative, you know, I'm not argumentative. How many other towns?
No, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is, there is a-
No, no, I know what, I know what you're saying.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, there is a provi, there is a provision that, there's an amendment to the town subdivision code, which I believe eliminates the requirement to have a public hearing on a lot consolidation.
And I'm not afraid to have, I mean, again, if I have to wait till October for this law, or if I have to schedule a public hearing, it's, I'm waiting anyway, so I don't care, the neighbors-
The other issue too is, under the recent SECA regulations, it's now a lot line elimination is a type-two action. So, this action is not subject to SECA.
Whatever, whatever, you know, I'm easy, whatever the pleasure of you guys are. I was hop, I was hoping not to have a public hearing, you just say, hey, I'll put David's few notes on there and let him review it and we're over and done with, we'll file, uh, at the county clerk's office. But whatever you guys want to do, whatever Jim wants to do.
Yeah, um, do you think it, I mean, it's definitely gonna be removed come October, I mean, depending upon the town board updating the, updating the regulation?
Again, I-
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in discussion.
I shouldn't say that, it's on, it's actually not being introduced, it's being discussed at the, at the, at the meeting on the ninth, so probably the thing to do would be to schedule a public hearing.
This night, you mean Monday night?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it would be introduced probably at a subsequent meeting. And if it's not, if it's not in the package, I will, again, it's something we've talked about, because lot consolidations, it doesn't really make sense.
I mean, it's up, again, it's up to the board, it's from a timing point of view, I can't do anything anyway, so-
Wave the public hearing on this, I mean, it's just, it's making less of a need.
Well, the, the issue was, there was no provision in the code, in the subdivision regulations, to waive a public hearing on a subdivision, but there was a provision to waive it on a site plan.
On a site plan?
So, that was the-
Oh, so that's, okay, so it is still-
So, it's considered to be a subdivision, not a site plan.
Right.
So, that's the thing.
So, it's a non-wavable?
Right, that was, that's why the code is being amended.
So, you want to have a, do you want to have a public hearing?
Yeah, I'll have a public hearing.
Big decision, big decision.
No, no, I, I, no, no, it's, I mean, again-
The owners of the other companies will come out.
No, they will, they've already met them, and they're lovely people and they kind of believe-
They're the ones that you don't know who will stop them.
So, I, I have no problem, I mean, if that's the flavor of-
I, I think it-
Be, give me the information, I'll be glad to, uh-
It sounds like, yeah, it sounds like it's not, it's, for the subdivision, it's not, it's not wavable, which-
Right, that, that's the issue.
Right, which is, which is, all right, I just-
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll go ahead and schedule a public hearing.
October seventh.
What, October seventh? Good? Get a motion to schedule a public hearing for this project for October the seventh.
I'll make it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Motion made in second, is it?
First and second.
First and second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Harry, any opposed? Okay, so a motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go now.
Yeah, I know. Uh, well, I guess in the future, then I guess we'll avoid that, if they have that. Okay, um, all right, our last item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review, the, uh, Berto, uh, Berto subdivision. Yeah? Batero, okay.
So, my, uh, I love the new, and I got two of the Lexi, so I'm sure Batero's gonna actually serve as, as our usual client.
Okay.
Unless somebody's gonna care about those books.
Oh, could you just, um, you need to, uh, angle, yeah, angle the, um, the plan so that the camera up here-
The camera up there's gonna pick it up, yeah.
There you go, thank you.
Okay, so, good evening, Mike Gillespie from Gillespie and Associates Consulting Engineering. With me tonight is, uh, Mr. Steve Batero, he is the actual owner and the applicant. Uh, we're here tonight before you for just, just a conceptual, just to make sure we have ducks in a row and, and kind of run it by you. Um, this is a six-point-two acre parcel over off of Stony Hill Road, um, it's, it's a little oddly shaped. Um, Mr. Batero currently lives in a residence at the rear. Um, it's, uh, it's a little unique, because the property is actually split zoning. The front of the parcel, the yellow that's outlined on the map here kind of highlights the zoning boundary. So, the front parcel is R forty, the back parcel is R eighty, okay? So, meeting the frontage requirements and, and so forth, this is, the layout that we have, uh, it really becomes a, a flag lot on the rear portion of the R eighty lot. Um, I went through the code, the only thing that really kind of concerned me was the issue of flag lots. Uh, I went through the entire Watson's Code and didn't find anything that negated the allowance of it. Um, one of the things we did too was, uh, this, this is really, what we'd like to do is propose a shared driveway, okay? That's maybe, uh, depending on where it goes, it's not absolutely crucial, but, um, one of the concerns I had when I was out on the site was site distance. Um, if you stand there and you look, there's an existing old barn that sits in the front, which is proposed to be removed as part of this. So, Steve actually met with the current highway superintendent, um, two months ago, something along those lines, to take a look at it, to get a feel for it, and, uh, he, he was, uh, okay with the entrance. I think we had portrayed that we were gonna share the entrance and keep it where it is, not move it any further to the north, because there's, there is a bit of a restriction in that direction, so, um, certainly, we'll be working with the highway superintendent and so forth, because it's a town road in terms of his permission, but we wanted to, you know, I was concerned about it myself, so. Um, individual wells and septic, single-family home, um, that's, that's kind of the, uh, the application in a nutshell.
Okay, um, I mean, with it, without the planner here this evening, because there's a couple of, a couple of questions, um, I know we've dealt with in previous projects in the past, um, having to do with shared driveways. Um, and, listen, without the code in front of me to, to kind of look it up.
So, basically-
It's, I, I believe, isn't there a requirement to show on the plan that there's the ability in the future to have two separate, um, driveways in case something happens in the future where, you know, both parties want to get rid of the shared driveway and they're able to, you know, be able to provide individual driveways for each property?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the requirements in the code, um, I can try to pull it up, but-
And that, that makes sense, that's not uncommon.
And, you know, I, I, I mean, it looks like you can do it here, the one question, and this is kind of the issue, um, I know on the smart subdivision, the question was how, and that might maybe where you want to look as for, there's a condition as to how far the lot width, there's a provision that the, uh, the lot width be maintained for the width of the flag. Um, unfortunately, Barbara's not here, she can-
Yeah, I said, the two, the two people we really need to answer the questions.
Um, but that's, basically, there's a provision somewhere in the code, and it may be in the shared driveway provision, um, that says that, you know, the, the, the width of the flag has to go, um, be maintained back the length of the lot.
Okay, I, we, we, that is a-
And it looks like you meet it, I mean, it's not-
It's a fifty-foot swatch, you know, fifty-foot width. Over here, so we haven't reduced it, and then we provide a lot width at the midpoint of the lot for the front lot, and then at, on the flag, at the, at the, uh, the house location, which I, that's what I recall the code saying, but we'll, we'll, I'll nose around on that previous subdivision, because obviously, it's been dealt with before.
Yeah, I mean, reach out to, I'd reach out to Barbara and discuss it with her.
Okay.
Um, you know, because like I said, I know it's come up in the past, I just can't remember.
Because the only, the only question, and this came up, I want to say on a, application on Smithtown Road, um, yeah, well, the predecessor to that, because that was a, that was a, Magarelli was actually a combination of two of the lots that were previously committed, was, um, was whether or not, um, site distances became an issue.
For, for the shared driveway?
Well, for the, no, for the-
Individuals.
For the individual driveways.
Right, I, I'm trying to think, there was the one on All Angels Hill Road, I think was, um, I think it was Cohen's subdivision, where they, instead of, um, you know, instead of providing individual driveways, they wanted to do a shared driveway due to-
Right.
But that was due to site distance concerns, but they had a show on the plan that, in case they needed to, that they could provide, um-
Right, that was a shared driveway as well.
Yes, yeah, so they, they had a show on the plan that, that in the future, that each, each lot could have its own, um, access to All Angels Hill Road.
Right.
So, I, I think it just needs, not that you're planning on doing it, but you're showing that in the future, if needed, it could be done.
Right, if there's a neighbor, if there's a neighbor-to-neighbor issue-
Right, exactly.
They can always peel off and do their own thing.
Yep.
Right, okay.
I mean, other than that, I mean, obviously, the, the existing house is the one in the back there, so it's-
Right.
Everything meets all the requirements, and then the, uh, obviously, it'll meet all the setback requirements for the, uh, for the new lot in the front.
Right.
Okay, any, any board members have any questions?
How large is that front piece?
Uh, ninety-one thousand square feet, so approximately two acres, place with the zoning permits.
Thank you.
No questions.
What's the zone for the back piece, what's the zone?
The front zone is R forty, or forty thousand, and the rear is R eighty thousand. And the rear lot is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand square feet.
Okay.
So, we're well over the eighty.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, oh, I mean, in concept, I mean, I'm assuming that the rest of the board seems to be so reasonable. Assuming it fits, you know, those couple of concerns regarding, um, you know, the shared driveway access and then the flag lot, and whether or not there's anything that needs to be addressed for that.
Kicks, kicks us into something, right?
Yeah, I should, off, off the top, I don't, you know, I don't, I, I can't think of anything right now, but-
I mean, I did go through the code, I, I think we're okay, but let's, let me do a little research on that previous subdivision, I'll get in touch with the office and we'll just make sure that we're on a rate.
Yeah.
The, um, subdivision that I'm thinking about on, on, um, Smithtown Road is called Meg Tam.
Meg Tam?
M-E-G-T-A-M.
Oh, yeah, that goes back quite a while.
They had about three or four shared driveways.
Where along the-
Does it just bend there?
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
They basically did share driveways to, because there were a lot of grades, so.
Yeah, also, I believe there's also a, uh, there's a wetland on the property-
Yeah, there's a-
That just needs to be shown with its buffers.
Yep, again, we're not messing around in the back, we probably, I don't think there's an approved septic area in the back, so, while physically, there's no work gonna be done, I, the health department will require probably at least a design to show that we can get one to fit on the lot, but, uh, we'll get that all delineated and, you know, all that, and there's no, nothing really proposed to be done to the back, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and, okay, that's it. All right, so get those items addressed and I guess, once you're, you know, once you're ready, make a false submitted, we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds great, appreciate it, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's mine.
Okay, so being that's the last item on the agenda this evening, there's no other business?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Okay.